Vice Chairman of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission. We call this meeting, gentlemen, a regular meeting of the Minnehaw County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy for everyone tonight, please make sure that your cellphones are turned off. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural and areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter, and then each planning commission will vote independently to arrive at a decision. When the joint's agenda is complete, the city planning commission will adjourn, and the meeting will continue as the county planning commission considers items beyond this joint zoning jurisdiction. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by Monday, September 29th at 5:00. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission and city council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, October 21st at 5:00. Is there a motion to approve the July 28th Joint Planning Commission minutes?
Move.
Have it moved by Becky, seconded by Mark. There are no consent items, so we will move directly to the regular agenda. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda? So move Jeff. Check someone out here. Who said that first?
I did.
Jeff did? Okay, Jeff moves, seconded by Mark. Motion passes on the county's side. Following hearing procedure will be used. I will request the planning staff to represent the report of the item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by the chairman, moved to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and the planning commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. Thank you for your cooperation. First, I have...
Good evening, Commissioner. David Heinel, Planning Department. Received a conditional use permit application from Geronimo Energy, 14-44, to allow a solar energy conversion system. Skip forward this slide. This is the subject property. It's located about one mile west of Sioux Falls, right along 268th Street. See this area right here. Skip ahead here. This just shows a zoomed-out version of the site plan that Geronimo submitted to our office. It shows the location, Sioux Falls in the vicinity to the east of this, and just roughly to the west of this property is another development, the Country Acres subdivision, which is an older development, roughly 1940s, 1950s type housing. So here's the site plan showing the indication of the project would roughly cover about 99 acres on this parcel. As you can see, it's outlined in the areas that shaded in the gray. This area is where the solar panels would be. The applicant is requesting approval of a two-year conditional use permit for a solar energy conversion system, or as I'll refer to, SECs, just for reference. Due to the lengthy development process and need to have assurance of the permitting for marketability of the solar site, it is essential for Cherry Creek, where Cherry Creek is a subsidiary of Geronimo Energy. It is essential for them to receive a two-year CVP because of the anticipated project completion date of December 2016. As I said before, Geronimo chose this site based on significant landowner interest, interconnection suitability with utility lines, optimal solar resource potential, and minimal environmental impact. So the planned output of this project is up to 10 megawatts of solar capacity, which would generate enough energy to roughly power 2,000 homes annually. The solar farm is proposed to utilize the typical 300-volt photovoltaic panels, centralized inverters. As you can see on this map right here, the inverters would be located along the access road. They would access off of 467th right here from the east and come in. This would be the road. It goes around, as you can see, it loops around. Take one of the inverter stations where everything would, the panels themselves would tie into, and eventually they would end up on a transmission grid. This would go around, and there's about four or five corners where they would have their staging areas for the construction of the solar farm itself. So if I skip forward here, these two images are, they have, they propose two different kinds of options for the panels themselves. It would either be a linear axis tracking system that would follow the sun throughout the day. Of course, they would be facing east in the sunrise, and then it would be roughly perpendicular to the ground in the afternoon, mid-afternoon, and then finish off in the evening, they'd be facing west. The linear tracking system is right here. The height was roughly, this is a section that shows, they're about 8.3 feet, which is about eight and a quarter, which varies, depends on different types of models that they have. So it's a little bit over the size of the average human being. Or their other option is go with the standard fixed-tilt system, which would be, it looks like a little bit taller. It's almost about nine feet, so it would be, it would feel a little bit more intimidating, but so it would have, but those would face directly south to our solar energy. So the panels themselves will be approximately four to six and a half feet long. As you can see, the longer one would be more suited towards the fixed tilt by two to three and a half feet wide and about one to two inches thick. And to the extent practical, the foundations will be likely as steel was driven here, depending on, the applicant stated that they needed to have additional geotechnical soil tests that need to be done to determine whether or not they can just, they can have foundations, whether or not foundations will be required for the solar panel. So I skip forward here. This is a case study that was submitted by Geronimo Energy at St. John's University, the St. John's University Solar Farm College in Minnesota. This is an aerial view that shows the panels. I think it's a roughly smaller-sized project, and this is less than half of them. This project would be a little bit double the size of this one, or about that. So the areas around, let's skip forward here. This would be the linear tracking system. The areas of bare ground around the facility would be planted with a low-growing seed mix, or clover, short grasses, or flowers, any kind of low-growing fords, or low-growing wetland seed mixes, or some other low-growing perennial cover. So as you can see here, this just goes into looking between the rows and kind of giving a little bit of a visual image of what it would look like as you progress through the site. And then this would be the fixed-tilt tracking system is just a close-up view of that. And so this is the, internally, the panels would be connected electrically to meet an centralized inverter, as I mentioned before, that would be along that service road, which will convert the DC power to AC power. So an onsite transformer will help step up the voltage to meet the interconnection voltage of 34.5 kilovolts. As I'll mention here, this is the project interconnection vicinity map. As you can see in yellow, this is the subject parcel, and then the blue is the entire parcel, 140 acres. This one would only be 99. So they plan to connect, interconnect with Excel Energy's existing 34.5 kilovolt distribution system near the project, leading approximately 1.5-mile 34.5-kilovolt underground collection line. As shown on the map, this line will be buried underground from the project site. As you can see here in red, it will continue north along 467th until it meets with 267th, and it will head east towards the point of interconnection, which at this point it will interconnect with the transmission grid to service the power. The applicant has attached with detailed information, which he has received in the form of preliminary site plan, which shows the general footprint and layout of the project, including those locations of facilities. And that, just reminding you, the timeline that indicates the estimated completion date is December 2016, as they were working through a process to gain funding for this. This is the map that they supplied for the total number of occupied structures within one-half mile. Each house represents one residence. As you can see, there's about a handful, 10 to 12 residences within one-half mile. So just to go through the criteria that applicants must meet that are set forth in the 2002 revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County and the city of Sioux Falls. Number one is the impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties shall be a major consideration. The proposed use should be generally compatible with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. So what I've come up with, the other, other than the slight visual impact of the panels themselves, the proposed solar farm should not have a detrimental effect on adjacent properties. Should be assumed that a majority of the impact will be during setup and the commissioning process. However, solar energy conversion systems typically have a much wider effect on surrounding properties as well as the land itself. And this, of course, is compared to wind and energy conversion systems in terms of the impact on everything around. And during operations, few acts or disturbances of peace should be expected due to the minimal maintenance required for a solar farm project of this scale. The applicant plans to use panels that are specifically designed to capture the maximum amount of solar energy. Therefore, there will be no reflection of any kind on adjacent properties. Number two, that measures shall be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the general character of the area or neighborhood. The general character of this area is primarily agriculture. As you can see in this image right here, these are just some views of the site. This is from the south along 268th Street. Let's continue on. This is north looking towards one of the residences that is located just to the east of the proposed site. And that both of the, 268th and 468th are both gravel roads, but 268th has a little bit magnesium core applied to help control the dust flyaways. The view west on 268th, as you can see, this is just getting into more and more views of the site in terms of view from the southeast, and then skip forward. This is from the southwest corner, and then you continue. So this is looking a little bit further back from the project, looking back east on 268th, just to show, to help show the general character, that it's mainly agricultural. And so these, these images were actually taken from the road that's just to the west, about a mile away, just to see the vanish point, because there are a couple residences or acreages along that street on the west side. So this is kind of the view that they would have, because the topography kind of dips down, and you can, it kind of goes into a valley where you can see everything to the And so that, so there's about 10 single-family dwellings and three farms that sites within one mile radius, as I mentioned. It's located exactly halfway between Sioux Falls suburban residential development and the Country Acres subdivision, which I mentioned before, which makes for an ideal area for a solar farm of this scale, while providing all the residents in the vicinity with a piece of mind concerning this type of development. Although the proposed location for this project is on approximately 80 acres of productive agricultural ground, it is depicted in an area lying adjacent to the Sioux Falls municipal growth area, which does extend all the way to 2035-ish. It's actually located just, if I go back here to the map, just for reference. So it's actually depicted just about a half mile to the east would be that municipal growth area, 2035. Well, however, while this area is not likely to see a significant change in values, however, it's expected, it felt, and it will occur at some point during the approximately 20-year, 25-year life of SECs. And number three, the effects of noise, odor, traffic, air, water pollution, and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screening, setbacks, and orientation. There should be no little or no negative effects, because the site is selected based on significant landowner interest, interconnection suitability, optimal solar resource, and minimal environmental impact. At a minimum, the petitioner should be held accountable for damage to public or private lands and roads. The applicant indicated in their request that they are willing to work with the necessary parties to ensure that the effects of the projects are minimally defended, although not completely, not completely necessary, and this was one of the concerns that was brought up by neighbors, that screening could be a possible requirement or a condition of approval for this conditional use permit, to help, to help them with their concerns about the visual impacts, that a project of this scale would have on me. While it may be difficult to determine the amount of noise generated from the transmission lines and/or transformers, it should not be at a level that would otherwise constitute a nuisance for surrounding properties. And lastly, number four, the proposed use shall not adversely affect the public. The applicant sent out, did send out a courtesy letter about a couple of months in advance to inform nearby residents about the proposed solar farm project, and actually just generally what to expect from this, this type of innovative development in their area. So Cherry Creek plans to utilize either a fixed-tilt solar panel modules facing south or a linear axis tracking system that faces east in the morning, perpendicular to the ground during midday, and west in the afternoon. In either case, there is potential for slight visual impairment of the view from residents' homes, but should not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. So SAC recommends that the proposed project meets the goals and policies of the 1998 Comprehensive Development Plan. So therefore, SAC recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-44 with the following conditions. Number one, that the SECs be entirely enclosed in a six-foot-high fence gated and locked, that if dust, mud, dirt, or other debris causes a nuisance to adjacent properties or is brought onto 268th or 468th Avenue, all driving and parking areas will need to be hard-surfaced. The stormwater pollution prevention plan and soil erosion and sediment control plan be submitted to the planning director prior to construction. That a landscaping plan be submitted prior to construction, and all landscaping shall be maintained, and livestock and all noxious weed to be controlled on-site. That the applicant shall follow the proposed construction phases of the SECs as submitted to the planning director. That a building permit is required prior to construction of the SECs and installation of any signage. That all signage be in conformance with Article 17 and 17A 00, the 2002 revised joint zoning ordinance for the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, so we start with questions. David? This is the first one of this type we've had. We've got a question down there, Commissioner Barth.
David, is there any issues with water on this property? Or is there drainage? Is there a slew? Is there a stock dam?
I know most of the properties, just driving up, coming from the east towards, from the city, it is a pretty heavily area that's wetland area.
Okay.
So in this area, it did seem like it, it seemed like most of the pictures that I saw that was mainly all agriculture and corn. There may be a slew or some kind of a wetland to the west of there. As you can see, there's kind of a dark spot just above the subject property.
I guess one more question.
There may be, sorry.
How far north of 268th or whatever it is would the beginning of the project be?
So as you can see here, this, on the site plan, it indicates that the setback would be a little over 500 feet from the south. And from the east, it would be about 100 to 200 feet. Some of them would be even less for one of the property owners. So potentially, it could have solar panels in their backyard.
Okay. Any questions?
I understand you've gotten some citizen input on this?
Yes.
Can you give us an idea of what the general nature of the concerns were?
Well, I'll just, quick summary of some of the concerns. As far as, I mentioned the, the impact on property values, and while it may be difficult to determine whether or not a project of this scale would have a, have a negative impact on property values, and then other ones in concern of the visual screen, which would really help if maybe if we added a requirement in the conditions to include some type of screen, grasses and trees, or something like that, but that may get into the point where they made it too tall or grow too tall. And just another concern as far as the use of the land and whether or not it would be the best use in mind for the current landowner, as far as, would it be better to keep the property as primary renewable farm ground, which it very well may be? That was another one of the concerns. And just, as far as the unsuitliness of a security fence, it's been compared to like a landfill, or some other use like that, or electrical substation, looking at security fences. That's what you look at, and it's not, and another one is that the unreasonableness that it's, it's so close to residences, which again, are about 10 to 12 residents, which there's potential for more single-family dwellings in the area. So that in a sense is kind of a summary of what, what's been said to me, the phone calls that I've received.
Thank you.
Good, David, now, as I'm looking at that map, and the three residences on the south side are actually, have a significant setback where the panels will be? Am I looking at that correctly?
It looks like it would be over 600 feet, maybe.
Okay. Okay, perhaps we should, okay, so any other questions before we have the petitioner?
David, how close is the closest resident?
The closest one would be the residence that's right here, the existing building. This setback is, is actually less than a foot from, the setbacks are from the panels themselves to the property, looks up to the property line. So that one shows about 94 feet to the property line, and that's the residence that sticks out.
Any more questions?
Yes.
David, the county currently allows construction of wind towers, correct?
With a conditional use permit.
With a conditional use permit. Thanks. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll have the petitioner come forward. Thank you, David. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Jordan Buremeister, on behalf of Cherry Creek Solar LLC and Geronimo Energy. Cherry Creek is a subsidiary of Geronimo Energy. Geronimo Energy is a developer, a truly skilled developer of solar and wind primarily, and renewable energy in general. Our company has developed and constructed wind farms, and just getting into the solar industry and developing projects since 2005. To date, we've constructed 239 megawatts of wind. We've got a developed pipeline of currently 1,000 megawatts of wind that's secured power purchase agreements with utilities, and also working with Minnesota with Excel on a large solar project there. Geronimo is developing this project, you know, specific location in close proximity to the local distribution system of Excel Energy, but not getting too far out from the local demand and electricity need, where it makes it economical to deliver that power that distance. So this power will be generated locally and proposed to be used, utilized locally as well, through the local Excel Energy distribution system. And this, you know, power would be transmitted from the project site to the corner of 41st and Ellis, and that's where we're going to be tying on to Excel's local distribution system. Our line would be 34 and a half kilovolts, about a mile and a half route to get to that point. And as far as the proximity of the, the way the site plan was developed, we really tried to push it back into the northwest corner to allow some additional buffer space as well from the other property lines as well. I also got Tina Raitel here as well, a solar developer, can speak more on the specifics of the solar project itself, kind of go through a brief presentation here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for having us back. What I'll do is I'll walk through some general solar 101, give you pictures on what you can expect of our construction. I know there's quite a few people here that I think will be quite helpful to walk through some of those educational pieces and give you a better sense of what, what you can expect. I'm not going to read this slide word for word, but basically, what we're doing with the solar panels is collecting the sun and creating electricity. Now, there are two different ways you can use that. You can use that by putting it into the electric grid, which is what we're proposing here, and of course, there's also solar panels that you can use to charge batteries. My dad uses one to keep his boat battery alive during the winter. Some people have it for their cellphones. So there's a couple uses that you, that you'll see with solar technology, pretty common, and in this case, we'll be putting it on the electricity grid. So there are a few components to a solar, to a solar facility. I have them listed here. There are inverters, the modules and the panels, which is the most, or the easiest, easiestly, most easiest identifiable piece of a solar project. We have racking, which is the actual steel frame that the panels sit on. We have access roads. There will be roads that will go through the, the site, the footprint. And there are other electrical components, as you can imagine, transformers, cables, there's security fencing, stormwater retention areas, and then operation and maintenance sheds. And you can actually see this aerial, which is St. John's University, which David did mention earlier. So now this one is 400 kilowatts, and the site that we are proposing in Cherry Creek is 10 megawatts. So there are 1,000 kilowatts and 1 megawatt. So the 10-megawatt side is significantly larger than this. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that, because you can see a house in this photo, and you can kind of get the, the idea of the size. Now, the white box in the middle is the inverter, and it's really hard to see here, but there's a green box next to it, which is the transformer, and then of course, you can see the panels. They're spaced about 20 feet apart, so it's quite a green, a green habitat. It's not impervious, like a lot of people think they're just back-to-back-to-back. So the first primary component of a solar facility is the inverter. Now, the inverter, as said before, takes the DC power, converts it into AC. It's often called the brains of the system, because after it does that, it also monitors everything. So we can remotely monitor it. We'll have computers that read it, and it is a pretty serious situation with these. They, they run the system for us. They also tell the panels when to turn if it is using a tracking system. Now, the bottom left is a, is, actually, the bottom pictures are inverter skids, and the bottom left is an enclosed inverter skid, and that's a transformer that's sitting on kind of the outside of the enclosure. And then on the, near bottom right is the open skid. And then, of course, the top is just the inverter. That is what goes inside the skid. Included in the skid is the AC collection, the DC collection, and again, that monitoring Now, the modules and panels, there are basically two types of technologies when it comes down to the panels. There's thin film, and there's polycrystalline. They do the same thing, they just do it a little differently. The typical one that you're most likely to see is a polycrystalline, and here you can see it, it's labeled, so you should easily see that. It is six, typically six feet by three feet, creates about 300 to 310 watts per panel. And now, we do get a lot of questions about these. We get a lot of questions about glare. They're built to absorb as much as possible, and they have an anti-reflective coating on them. There are really any glare issues that come with a solar, solar array. They are found on airports. Denver Airport has them. Minneapolis Airport right now is currently planning on, on, on building one there. There's a, there's a runway in the Bahamas or the Virgin Islands that have them actually along the runway, so I think that's a good example of the non-glare issue. Additionally, we get questions about weather. They can handle 1-h mile, 50 miles an hour, so they are breakable. They're kind of like your windshield. You can kind of think of them that way. You have to, you can break them, but you've got to have a little power behind it. And it's tempered black, so it won't shatter in the way that you might think it would. And then the racking system here. So now there's, I only have a picture here of the tracking, but I'll have a picture of the fixed tilt as we go along. The reason why we have both is because we don't have final design completed, and as you find an optaker for the energy, they have different needs, and so we're, we would like to leave that open for the, which racking system would be preferred by the optaker. You can see the steel post is driven into the ground. It's driven and passed froст depth. I'm not sure what the frost depth is here, but those are what the geotechnical studies will confirm for us, and tell us exactly how deep that goes. And then you can see the pivot bar. See if you can see the little mouse here. You can kind of see it. Here's the pivot bar, and that will stand about four to six feet off the ground. So I guess up here, so four to six feet. And that is where the plate is sitting, and this is the tracking system, so this is actually what it'll look like facing, facing up like this at noon. They'll face east about 45 degrees in the morning, and west 45 degrees in the evening. It's a little different. A lot of people think they face south, but these in fact do not face south. Some basic pictures of solar facility construction. I like this photo, because it gives you an idea. You've got a couple pickup trucks, you've got a semi with a flatbed, you've got some machinery in the back. This is a very typical solar facility construction site.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
What is the expectation, expected construction timeline on a project like this?
That's exactly what I was about to say next. It is about four to nine months. They can be constructed as quick as three to five. It just depends on the situation. In this case, there's not a lot of grading needed, so that, that cuts up, cuts out a lot of time. And they do do the typical construction hours, so in the morning to the evening. Here's a photo of a semi and the modules on it, and so you can just, just give some images, give you an understanding of what kind of equipment is The access roads are just laid-down gravel, pretty simple. We don't go into anything too extensive on-site. Now, we do have to have a security fence. It is a power plant, and for insurance purposes, you do have to have a security fence. So it's 6-foot chain link. There's usually a foot of barbed wire on top. So a few pieces of the construction that I'll go into. Grading is a piece, and what we have is a scraper on your left, which does it, takes some of the soil off the top and puts it into the low, and then the low kind of dips. Now, the picture on your right isn't quite a grading picture, but it's more of a dirt-moving picture, and it also gives you an idea of the electrical conduits and the wiring and how those will work. So they'll come to the end of the road, they'll go down about, I'm not quite sure, maybe 3 feet, 4 feet. And then, that worker there is replacing the soil and compacting it in a way that keeps it safe. Pile driving. So this is basically taking those steel posts and vibrating them into the ground. You can see it on your right. That is a typical pile driver. The one on the left is more of a picture of the machinery. That's a forklift there, the large one is, and then there's also pile drivers in the Pictures of the installation. So the picture on your left is basically just to show the finer details that's required to install. It is labor-intensive, so I think for this project, we've estimated 170 construction-related workers for the project. And then, on the right, you can see a worker who is actually bolting the final pieces. And this is a fixed tilt system. So you can see that it's too high, which is very typical for fixed, and then tracking tends to be one just for the torque of that turning. It's pretty tough when you do two panels. So you'll see two panels or more on fixed, and then one panel on tracking typically. But he's just bolting them on. You've got to put one on after the other, and then bolt them, and if one is broken or hail damages one, you can simply unbolt it, take it off, and put in one. It's quite modular. Operations and maintenance is quite simple. After the construction is done, it's just a couple pickup trucks typically and a couple repair guys. On-site, there will be at least three full-time equivalent jobs, because it would be so large, it would require repairs, and it is professionally managed, so all the grasses and if there's any snow plowing that's required, will be professionally managed. And of course, there's electricians and those types of... That type of work as well. And then, this is a good... Just a good picture of the restoration, the revegetation. So it's the same site. You can see the construction on the left has been completed, and after the revegetation, you can see it on the right. So a few other things that I wanted to go into, aside from just kind of giving a broad overview. You know, I didn't go into too many details of how much of a low impact this project is, or solar is. So there's no noise. The inverters will make some noise, but those dissipate by, you know, 100 feet, give or take some. And we have noise studies for those. So essentially, noiseless. They don't have any smells. They don't reflect like mirrors, as a lot of people do think. So there are no glare issues. They're low to the ground. When the corn is up, you actually can't see them. So we give ourselves a little cushion, so we say 10 feet for tracking, up to 10 feet for tracking, up to 12 feet for fixed, and that will depend on the topography. So sometimes, the racking systems can work with a little topography, and it just depends on the grade. So that's what the grading is used for, is to even out some of those grades that might be too much for the racking to handle. And like I said earlier, they're built to absorb as much light as possible. It's really green underneath. And in this case, we did bring this project with a 500-foot buffer or setback from the southern property boundary. And we did that because that is by far the best mitigative measure for reducing visual impact, is a setback. That's the best thing that we can do in any project to reduce visual impact. And we have the whole 140 acres, so we, you know, what we did is we intentionally put that up in the northwestern corner. So we gave that 500, at least 530 from the property line. So I don't know what it is exactly from that property line to the actual houses. And then, on the east side, I believe it's 400 and some feet, and then the closest is 94. Now, the reason why that one is so close is there is a visual buffer with the extensive growth that that landowner does have. So that was a little bit about that. I want to make sure I cover anything else that needs to be covered with the proposed site plan. I guess, you know, just a broader understanding, this is the very first step that we do as a developer. What we do is we come in, we make... We put all of the ducks in a row, so to speak, for these projects to be attractive to the purchaser of the energy. We do the permitting, we do the geotechnical studies, we do all the environmental reviews. So wetlands will be looked at, there'll be phase one, ESA is done, there'll be archaeological look, the studies completed as well. So we go through this, we try to... And we make it as attractive as possible for the off-taker. So this is the first step. We are currently working on ensuring that all those will be put together for a good off-taker, and again, that's just reiterative of why we need 2 years. So I think that's all I have, and we're happy to take any questions.
Questions? Petitioner?
Yes. Could you share with this commission and the members of the audience, if you know, what impact the... That one that you showed us from Minnesota? What impact that may have had on property values or surrounding homes in that area?
That's a good question. So we get that question, property values, in both directions. Is it going to reduce my property value, or is it going to increase my property value? In reality, it's unlikely to do anything. We currently have a 100-megawatt project in Minnesota, excuse me. It's across 24 locations, and we have had people who are buying the properties next to them without having any issues on what solar... You know, I get calls asking me about what's the hazardous wastes, you know, concerns about safety and health. Of course, there's no hazardous waste with a solar farm, and it doesn't make any noise, and solar to ground. A lot of things that people are happy to hear about. So we haven't... In our experience, we have had people who are interested in buying properties next door. And actually, in this case as well, in the Cherry Creek.
So your general assessment would be it would have little or no impact on the properties that were immediately adjacent to that project there. Other projects, similar results?
I would say that it's a broader... It's not just specific to that project. I would say it's broader. I would apply broader.
Okay.
So yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Bill.
Is the property that you're planning to build us on, is it currently owned by you or leased? Do you have an option on it? What does that look like?
It's a contract for option.
Contract for option, okay. Assuming you get permits and so forth.
Correct.
Okay. And you currently have a purchase agreement and off-take agreement then with Excel Energy?
We are currently working on that. That is one of the things that we obviously have to have completed before we even think about constructing. We have our application into them for interconnection studies.
And you currently provide power through solar facilities in Minnesota to Excel Energy?
The project I was talking about, the 100-megawatt one, will. It's not constructed yet.
Okay. But you have an agreement with Excel in that circumstance?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the PPA has been negotiated.
Right.
And it's going to the Public Utilities Commission tomorrow.
Power purchase agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And we were indicated in staff testimony, lifespan of a project like this. They've mentioned, I think David mentioned something like 25 years?
So typically, contracts are 20 years. The life of the equipment itself is longer, 30. They will... The panels will keep producing. Just a matter of what's the best and highest use of the property at the time of the end of the contract.
Okay. And then, regarding, assuming that the facility does reach its expected life expectancy of 30 years, decommissioning process, what does that look like?
Yeah, so we know it's part of the CUP, and it's pretty typical for us to have a decommissioning process. So the next thing I want to sign with the loan pack is that we can just pull the foundations or the peers up, and the property has been in a solid state habitat, or however you would like to call that, for 20 years. So that can either be put back in agriculture, it can be used for, like I said, the best and highest use at that time for that property. Decommissioning, you know, typically is pulling them out. There's a lot of salvage value also with this. So typically, you don't want to leave that kind of asset out, because you can garner some economics from that.
So an option to decommissioning would be perhaps to upgrade the facility if technology improves with more efficiency, better solar panels in the future? Would that be an option?
Yes, but if we're decommissioning, that assumption would be that it's no longer going to be used for solar.
Assuming that if you weren't going to decommission it, technology improved, would that be an option, that you would upgrade the facility so it was more efficient?
Yes, I suppose. And it's 20 years down the road. Dranimal unlikely own the Cherry Creek, so...
Okay. And then, regarding decommissioning, do you have to post a bond for that or anything?
I believe the requirement asks... I'm going to have to refresh my memory. I believe the CUP requires us to determine with the county and the board on what's the best way to put that up. And the decommission plan will be submitted prior to construction, so just so you know that much.
And one last question, Mr. Chairman. Regarding, are there any deadlines with federal tax incentives or anything that your project might be up against that we should be aware of?
The December 2016, there is a tax credit change at the end of '16.
So this project is designed to be put in place prior to that deadline?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Stay silent. No, wait. The security lighting. Was that up earlier?
Oh, no, but I can talk about it.
Is it dark? Can I hold it?
Yeah, so there's no lights on the site that are on. We'll have lights at the inverter skids for repair, but those will be, you know, their hand switcher or motion sensor.
Just real quick. You had mentioned that the panels themselves have an anti-reflective coating, they will not reflect, and that also extends to the framing?
Well, the framing is metal, so there's, you know, nothing is... Everything has some sort of a reflection. But in terms of issues, there aren't really any glare issues. Specifically, going back to the airports, putting them on their properties, on their roofs, along their runways, even with the frames, there are no issues.
Okay. Any other questions?
Regarding the security fencing, have you done something other than just chain link and barbed wire? Are there other options that you look into for those things?
It's based on insurance. We have to have security fencing. At St. John's, it doesn't have security fencing. It has like an agricultural fence, but that's because the campus itself has security. So yeah, unfortunately, that, you know, we do have to use a secure fence.
Are there other options that provide a security component without being quite so industrial, since this is adjacent to some home properties?
That's a good question. I am not a fencing expert, so what I will do is I can, I mean, I can ask about that. I can't imagine that there's anything, you know, less... Let's go to look for less impactful than the way we have it in terms of, you know, I think about maybe an electrical fence or something, but I can't imagine that would be less impactful than this one, just in general. I mean, and that's part of the reason why we pulled it off the setback, is we pulled it off the property line and had that large setback. It's for, you know, we understand that, and so we're trying to... We did the best mitigative measure that we have in our pockets to push that back.
So as you say that, does that mean the security fence actually doesn't sit at the property line, it sits at the backside of the setback?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood that.
Yes, yeah, so the fence will be up against the structure. It'll be about... It depends. I want to say this one says 50, might say 50 feet off of the fence line? Yes. Yeah, looks like the structure in this one is 50 feet off this fence.
And then, there's vegetation between that fence and the property line, like trees, shrubs, whatever?
It'll likely continue to be cropped, which is actually, in our opinion, a great screen. When the corn is up, you cannot see it. And so, you know, from our opinion, using that as crops, as we tend to continue to use, this is a great screening action.
Thank you. Why don't we move to the... I know there's a few people in the audience who want to address this, and you'll be on deck yet for some questions?
Absolutely.
So let's see if anyone in the audience wants to address this issue, please. Get one up, give us your name and address.
You want to come up here?
Yeah, right up here. Now we have some...
I'm Royce.
Just give us your name and address, and if you're one of the residences, point it out.
My name's Kent Bronzrether. My address is 46765 268th Street. Oh, boy, where do I start? Yes, I am one of those residents.
Are you one of the south residents?
That is correct.
Okay.
I realize they have the luxury of the overheads and such, which I don't have. This is a picture.
Scott?
Can you pull that in?
We actually can.
Okay. This is a picture from my deck of the project hearing. That's 268th Street. That fence post is my fence post, and I'm sitting up on my deck. You can see all the way clear over the 41st Street, right over the top of all of us. The corn, I don't know if you see my little marks on there, right? The base of the corn is about where the roots of the ground is, and then there's a mark up there, that's 6 feet high. So in other words, you measure the corn to that tasseling, it's about 6 feet high. So the next mark is 12 feet high. In the report that I got, it states that the... There's two options for these panels. One is 11-foot, or 10-foot high, and one is 12-foot high, depending on which one they use. I believe the stationary one is the taller of the two. Is that correct? Okay. And I don't know how to work these things here, but I noticed on one of the pictures she was showing where the worker was, and he spent over working on it, his head's about at midstream of that panel. I don't know how short or tall he is, but I'm just questioning, because earlier on the report, it said was, what was it, 8-foot, I believe, the panels were? Somebody said it was barely over the corn?
Scale drawings.
So the scale drawings and what I have said, there is a variation between the scale drawing versus...
So which one is it?
It's up to 12 and up to 10.
Okay. So twice... Virtually twice as tall as corn. Is that correct?
I...
Okay, yes, it'd be 12 to 10, is what she said.
So that's what I'll be looking at. Now, they said that, I know they kind of boasted the fact of the setback of 500 feet from that southern road. I had a conversation with Jordan over this project, and through that conversation, it kind of came out, and I'm just making a point, while it is fact, it's 500, you know, they're going to put the fence back to 500 feet, but the reasoning for that was because of the drainages that are in there. There's water drainages run through there. If you look at that, or able to look at that one photo, the top graphical, and I think you asked some questions about any water. There is a lot of water. I've lived there for 20 years. Well, I've had the property for 20 years, lived there for 15. And there is a lot of water that comes through the ditches. Sometimes those roads actually get flooded. On the way out of 57, they've been blocked and closed for periods of time. So those ranges would get really full of water that run through there. That is why they're doing a setback of 500 feet. But it is fact that they're doing it, okay? My property is 600 feet long from front to rear, so it may seem like a lot to people who live in town on a city lot, but out there, it's not very big. It's not very far. The other point is, my property line to their property line is 66 feet. Wait, if you go property line, because that's the road east, but, you know, so that's, you know, this is a very large footprint on our landscape, very large, and we have seen nothing like this anywhere around here. I'm concerned about how close it is to the Fall City. The projects that the city has is, it'll be within about a quarter mile of us at some[1771.25] Uh, the projects that the city has is, uh, it'll be within about a quarter mile of this at some point. I'm concerned about land values, but more importantly, I'm concerned about every day that I come home, leave, or am there during the day, having to see those panels straight out the front of my house. You know, when you look at that picture there, envision that full of panels, and be out the front door. Now, they seem reluctant to put any screening on that, there was talk, I think I heard tonight, about putting it in corn. Corn, um, gets to its full height about three months out of the year at most, and then it's cut down. So you see that prison fence is gonna be wide open, five hundred feet, um, with barbed wire on top of it, and the panels behind it, twelve foot high. And it has an upward slope, so you'll see, yeah, the whole road is all with crosses, not a downward slope, it's an upward slope from two hundred and sixty eighth street. And corn gets rotated into beams every other year. So on the off year, there'd be sunny beams, which is every month out of year, couldn't be that high a cover there. Those are some points that, you know, I guess I'd like to bring out, and, um, I'm concerned as well, the, the property right to my left is also owned by the same landowner. If they get this to go through and build, what is the, um, probability that the landowner and this company will get together and expand this project into that whole another quarter section, which greatly will involve those other homeowners directly across the road from them?
That'd be an entirely different issue.
I understand that, but, you know, this, I'm sitting here as a guy that's gotta look at these panels. So, it's interesting to me as well, and I don't know exactly, but I, I, I might be wrong with this, but I believe that other piece of property is also owned by the same landowner. And I'm not sure if it's that full quarter section or not, the one, if you go corner to the right over there. But he also owns a house right there, so he would have to look out his front yard and look at these panels. But he didn't choose that piece of property.
Anything else?
I could, I wonder where the energy goes, they said they're gonna sell to Excel. It's my understanding that Excel sells the energy across thirteen states. So, I mean, um, and I'm not saying it's been implied that Sioux Falls would receive the benefit of these, of that energy coming off of that farm. But, um, it's a very real possibility that that energy would be sold off somewhere else for profit, for profit for Tron and for profit for Excel. I'm concerned about the damage, I believe she said, uh, up to one inch hail off that big round. We had hail storm on June fifth, and I'm kind of in that business, and it broke out a lot of windshield, crushed it. Hail was that day round. Not all uncommon around this area. That's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience, are you on questions?
Yeah, sir.
Yes, question. Oh, yes.
I think I wrote your names on right, is it Brunswick?
Brunswick.
Rhyther?
Yep.
Still unsure I'll spell them right, but, um, Kent is the first name, right?
That's correct.
Would you be less concerned if there was, uh, provisions made by this commission to have the company that's gonna put up these solar panels plant a set of trees that can grow to eight to ten feet high all around their fence? Which would give you the aesthetics of having to look at trees rather than a fence.
Well, you know, that, I know that has been addressed multiple times by multiple people, because we've been talking around the neighborhood. But it does, it seems like the company's been pretty reluctant to do that, first off, that's the verbal feedback we've been getting. And, um, it would take trees, in my opinion, a little bit more than eight to ten, I mean, from my standpoint, because I, while I don't have a high deck, it's maybe three, four feet off, you sit up there, you know, it raises me up a little bit, like, so that's where that picture's coming from. So that's not down on the ground level, I'm not trying to deceive anything, but, um, it, it would take a little bit more than that, but, um, you're on, you know, I could be on the right track.
My thought is, is that if this commission so chooses, it might have to put a stipulation in, and in order to get the condition use permit, then the company would have to comply with that.
The only other concern I would have with that, um, would be it takes quite a while to grow a tree.
You also transplant trees too.
Well, and if you went that route, that would certainly go a long ways as well.
And Oswellows would be tall enough in three years.
Some of them grow very fast.
Okay, anything else, any other questions? Anybody else in the audience, please, thank you.
My name is Dave Dangle, I live at twenty six seven twenty three four hundred and sixty eighth Avenue, which is approximately one fourth mile north of the north, uh, property line where these are going to go. Yeah, so I have some concerns, I, I, you know, I guess one of my first concerns is, uh, I, I live a quarter mile away, and I really didn't know anything about this until Friday night, and somebody stopped by and told me. And as an example of, of a good neighbor, uh, this oil pipeline coming through from North Dakota is gonna come right through about that same area. They've already been around to talk to us a couple of times. I just got a notice today where they're setting up four or five meetings, one in Sioux Falls, so they can communicate with people and give us some information about the project and take our concerns, and we had none of this. And that really concerns me, what's coming down the road, if that's the best job these people can do right now. And, and I realize there are some, uh, restrictions and some deadlines and things like that, and, uh, by law, they're only required to do a certain amount. But I would think with a project coming in like this, they certainly could have done a better job of communicating with neighbors right from the beginning. Instead of us having to come here with our concerns, they could have been taken care of early. So, that, that's one thing I have a concern about. I'm more concerned with the north boundary. Because I look out my door and I look to the north, and from what I see, it's gonna be a chain link fence, and there isn't any setback on the north side. But at least not five hundred feet like on the, on the south side. And I, I, I think, uh, my concern about that could probably be addressed with, with what Mr. Pierce was talking about, with trees all the way around that property, uh, so we didn't have to look at that. And I would certainly urge you to take that into some strong consideration before you make any approval on this. I realize we live out in the country, we live out in the country, and we're used to seeing corn and beans and beer and everything else, but, uh, this is a home to ballgame in solar panels, and I don't think we should have to look out our door and look at solar panels. I think they should have to conceive those with some kind of a privacy fence, whether it be a fence for trees or shrubs or bushes or whatever. The other thing I get concerned about is to the north, uh, starting at that property line, there is a waterway, and that comes right to my property. It drains into, uh, kind of a slough just south of my property line. And that slough then drains through a man-made waterway on the backside, the west side of my property. And when it gets about three hundred foot to the north in my property, it takes a turn, and they, they dug a man-made ditch, and it drains about a, uh, third mile to the west.
Mr. Chairman, could, could you show us on the map where your home is and where this drainage is?
Well, uh.
Can you use the pointer there, can you see it?
I am right.
No, 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 north, keep going, north. Oh, oh, keep going.
Take it away from Scott, move it up.
He may live right up here.
There you go.
Okay, so you live right there, and where does this drainage go?
The drainage, you can just barely see that, I lost, you can see that drainage coming right there, there's that waterway. And it comes into this kind of slough, and it drains, there's a ditch, a man-made ditch, it was there when I bought the property twenty five, thirty years ago. And that drains through there, and then it heads west about down to Wayne Avenue, which is approximately a half mile. And then it drains through, under, I think there's a big culvert there, and it follows some, uh.
That was enough, I just couldn't see it on the map.
And so I'm concerned a little bit when, when they start doing some dirt work on that north boundary, if they're gonna shove more water into that ditch, and I'm gonna have more water problems. I already have water problems from the, the, this section right, this, this quarter right here. When, when we get heavy rains, this whole quarter basically drains across right through this quarter and washes the road out right along forty first street. So drainage is somewhat of a problem there, and from that east boundary, it kind of slopes towards south into that low spot. And that can be, that can be a problem there, so I think that's something that they need to take a, a little bit of a look at. The, the project, you know, the value of, of the property, I, I, I don't think anybody knows what's gonna happen with the value of property. I guess my big concern is the aesthetics and the water drainage, and I, I really think they need to do something about a privacy fence around that whole property, we should not have to look at that.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Have you anything new to add?
I have a question.
Sir, do you want to ask this phone?
Well, I just wanna make notation here that if you look at the stipulations set out by the county, number three would be that a stormwater pollution prevention pan. So the reality is, sir, that there can be no additional drainage off of this site than currently is right now. And it's a very low mitigating drainage impact because there's no hard surface for the most part, so prob, I mean, it's not my business, they'll have a, a study done, but the impact should be the same, if not better than what it is right now, uh, as it relates to drainage. And it's stipulated that in that, so, well, that's how it's set out by law.
And then all you see them with grass.
So.
But I, I do live there, I've lived there quite a while, and we do have flooding, and it's coming from the north, it's not coming from the.
So, right, so they probably will take.
From the north of that property, south of me is where all that water comes.
So they may have an opportunity to take on some additional drainage that they don't right now.
But it is a concern.
Understandable.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name's Dan Heine, I'm, I live at two six, two six seven seventy one four hundred and sixty eighth Avenue. I'm the one house that's right on top of the property.
Surrounded by trees?
Yes, mostly surrounded by trees, I do have some gaps in my trees that go out to the west, um, I can see that whole section. I've lived within a mile of that property for, since nineteen seventy nine. Um, I bought this place after my dad passed away, and I brought it, bought it from the current owners of the property. My understanding when I bought my property was that in that three mile boundary between the city and county, there was a stipulation saying you couldn't put more than four properties per quarter, four residences per quarter.
Opposing occupabilities, yes.
Right? And, you know, when I purchased my property, I was going in with that assumption that I'd never have more than three neighbors on my quarter. And now I'm gonna have thirty six hundred neighbors with every panel. You know, again, the aesthetics is the biggest thing for me, I love being out in the country, me and the kids go shoot clay pigeons out the west side of my property. I don't think they're gonna like all them pellets coming down on top of their solar panels. I guess my biggest thing is the aesthetics, traffic, um, construction traffic, dust control, um, you know, I'm very close to the property, and I, like I said, I've lived there for twenty-three years now. Um, it's a pretty close neighbor when you're not expecting any neighbors for foreseeable future. I mean, the, the current assessment, uh, or annexation proposal for the city of Sioux Falls falls a half mile to the east for the next twenty-five years, so, you know, I'm looking for a long time with no neighbors, and now this gets dumped on us again without any public meetings, any notification whatsoever. Do you have any questions for me?
There would have been notification, but signs posting.
There's a sign that's been posted. Yeah, behind thirty-six inch tall weeds.
That is correct.
Five hundred feet.
Wednesday night, it was in the weeds.
Okay, so, is there anything else, Mr. Heine?
Nope.
Good, thank you. We are, if you want to go ahead, more than a stall, we're people. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry we haven't mowed the weeds better in the county along the roads. I know it's a budget issue, I'm sure. They've been out a little, one more is down right now. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name's Pat Lee, and I live at twenty six seven sixty one Country Acre Drive, that'd be, I'm quite a ways away. But my concern is, two hundred and sixty eighth street is actually fifty seventh Avenue, and, you know, it, that road, if you've ever drove down it, it's almost a minimum maintenance road. It'll never, it'll never be able to handle the construction traffic without some sort of improvements, it'll never handle it. And that'd be, you know, and I mean, if you're looking for a place to put it, put it over behind landfill, that's, you only gotta move it about three miles west.
Thank you. I saw one more hand, that's an email says something new to add, go ahead, sir, right here.
My name's Wayne Larson, I live at two six eight six five four hundred and sixty eighth Avenue. I own a quarter section of land directly south of the project, I have nothing new to add, but I support everything that these folks have said. I have, I have, just wanna reiterate the comment about traffic, I mean, you got a, you got a township road that all this hundred and seventy workers are gonna come in on every day, and construction equipment and so forth. You know, who's gonna, who's gonna maintain that and take care of those kind of things? The dust control going by two residences on the way to the project, anyway, basically just reiterate what everybody else has to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Dean Scherr, I live at, uh, two six eight six one four hundred and sixty seventh Avenue. Which actually is right about there, and from one thing, um, we've lived out there now for about eight years, um, one thing that we've noticed is right at the end of, I mean, this is fifty seven, so right at the end of our road, there was stop sign. They replaced it, two weeks later, it's gunshot all up, no idea what's happening with it, I'm just kinda curious if, you know, they're on solar panels out there, most people don't, we've talked to a bunch of neighbors that are even a little bit to the, to the west of that, they don't hear any gunshots as far as anybody shooting up signs, nobody has any idea what's going on with it. I'm just kinda curious if nobody really pays any attention to that part of it, obviously, is it for people to come out and shoot up the solar panels at the same time too? So they might be replacing a lot of panels real quick. And that, and I'm not, then, the next question I have is, I did some research in hearing about solar panels, and now there's a, would you say a twenty-five year lease as far as, or twenty year lease?
Talking about life. Life of the panel is what she was talking about, twenty-five to thirty.
And if there's, if there's improvements within that time of solar panels, will they get replaced out, or would they just stay there until the life expectancy is over?
Go ahead.
That would be an economic decision that needs to be calculated, so if the panels are at a price that produces more, um, that works for the owner of the company, and they, they're, they could potentially replace them.
Anything, anything else? Okay, this'll be the last one, I think we've pretty well heard most of the issues. I think we've pretty well heard most of the issues.
My name's Nathan Earl, I'm from seventy-eight, ten, West Sixty-seventh Street. Early on, somebody said, "This is the first one we're doing." Kinda hard to blaze a new trail and I know you guys have a very difficult decision probably to make, you know, solar energy is a very attractive, you know, up and coming opportunity, I think, that maybe helps our environment, makes us feel better. Europeans have been doing this a lot longer than we have. The Energy Minister in Great Britain recently said, you know, "We're gonna stop putting them in farm fields, stop putting them in places where they have aesthetic problems and we're gonna start putting them on top of buildings in town, you know, the roof of this building, who would see it?" So, you know, I think that maybe farm fields aren't the best place for them.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, the petitioner wants to state one more closing comments and then we'll close the floor.
I wanted to address some of the, the issues that were brought up. I appreciate the drainage pattern and water question to be answered because I know that is part of the, the stipulations, as well as the dust control and the road, road requirements, road maintenance. We, solar does not have any heavy weights and it does not have any oversized loads. So we don't have the same impact on a road that, you know, you may envision with, for example, wind.
But most of theirs were during construction, was their main concern?
Yes, and during construction, we, we're happy to do a road agreement if we need, you know, if that is something that the township or whoever is the jurisdiction there, we're happy to do that. Shouldn't be a problem considering that we don't have any overweight loads and don't have any oversized loads. But that's something that Geronimo does regularly and, and commonly. So we're happy to do something with that. In terms of trees and screening, I wanted to talk a little bit about the trees. We typically don't use trees, one, because of shading concerns. If you, what we, so basically there's a shading concern when it comes to the trees. I know you guys noted that it's typically more difficult to move in a larger tree that will live. It's also a challenge that we see when, when we begin to try to landscape these types of power plants. And so what we, I know we were discussing potentially putting in, if we don't wanna do crops, we can put in a tall grass, whatever. I, I know there's a couple that have been thrown out, ideas like switchgrass or something that grows quite tall. We're happy to do something like that, it probably cover more in terms of width, more dense, densely, and then, you know, the height will be whatever that, that tall grass would be. We're happy to work with staff on figuring out what kind of a planting or what kind of tall grass would be appropriate, ones that would work for us. You know, it's a little difficult to, to burn things if it, you know, requires a burning and, and maybe that type of maintenance topic comes up and we discuss that. But we're happy to do that, we're happy to work with staff on finding, you know, that type of a screening option prior to construction or whenever that might be. But we would, you know, like the opportunity to have that talk and sit down and discuss with, at least with staff on that. Traffic during construction and traffic after, I did, you know, we will have construction during, or we'll, we will have traffic during construction. Afterwards, it's really quite minimal, like I said, a couple pickup trucks, wanted to reiterate that. In terms of citing, you know, we found, this is quite the, this is a great example of, from our perspective, a great site, great citing situation, where we are close to the load. Sioux Falls is, does need more electricity, there's growing demand for electricity. So we found a place that is close enough that we're able to economically provide that clean energy to the city without, without being in the growth potential, not impacting that growth potential where we're sitting. So, yes, we can put it five miles that way or three miles that way. We're gonna have the same sun, sure. Are we gonna be able to economically deliver that to, to Sioux Falls, to itself? No. So that's why we are, that's where we are where we are. You know, we do have, we did have negotiations and discussions with the landowners, so that is part of, you know, where these go and how we put them. So keep that in mind. And, you know, surprisingly, it's not the first time people have talked about shooting our panels. And, you know, we do have insurance and we also do have security, we do put security cameras in. So those are just, I wanted to address a few of those points. And then I know Jordan had a letter that did go out to all the neighbors. Did you wanna?
Yeah. I just, you know, wanted to address that, you know, we did send out a letter, a courtesy letter to all the landowners, you know, all properties within five hundred feet of the solar site. And this letter, you know, did address that we wanted the neighborhood landlords to come with us, send any questions and be open in this process here. So, I think we only got two calls back during that and there's obviously more concerns right now, but we did definitely send out that letter to open that conversation up to the neighborhood landowners, so.
Jordan, just to clarify, you did not have a, a neighborhood meeting or anything, it was just the letter that was sent out saying, "Call us if you have questions"?
Right, we provided pictures of panels and kind of a little bit of background on the project as well.
And part of the reason for the letter is to gauge interaction or involvement with the community and if we, in that situation, if we do have major concerns that are racist, you know, we feel that that's a good time to do a neighborhood meeting. But there are a lot of times when there just isn't as much involvement, there isn't as much engagement from a community and, and sometimes the letter is, is appropriate and that's, it's kind of our, it's a way for us to gauge what's the next step for a community discussion.
All right, thank you. Close the floor at this time, commissioners, discussion?
If, if we could, I wouldn't mind having staff come up and maybe just addressing this notification question. It seems like it's come up a few times now and if somebody could just come forward and just reiterate the fact that the letters were sent out, I think we had one gentleman state that he didn't receive one and it looked like he was fairly close or certainly within that five hundred foot range. Do you have a list of all the people that the letters were sent out to?
Six, six, six landowners were notified in the meeting with letters.
The county requirement is that we, the applicant has to send out a notice that we prepare and he sends it to everyone with, all the property owners within five hundred feet surrounding the subject property. So it's all the properties five hundred feet around the subject property. In addition, we require the applicant to place a, a green sign on the property on Friday or.
Was it Thursday that you went out there with a new sign?
Friday.
Friday, we got a call that the sign that had been posted had been tore, had been tore up. So I sent David out to place another sign out there to make sure that we attempted to make, to make the public aware that, that, that there wasn't hearing notice. So when the first sign, because, you know, it is South Dakota, it's windy, it got ripped, so we sent up, I sent David out, we put up a new sign. So I feel that we've, we've met the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Obviously, the public is aware, because they're here tonight.
Let me ask you, though, I think Dave was, or Kent maybe was the first neighbor that came forward and he lives south of that property. Would he have received a notice as well?
Uh.
If he's within five hundred feet, I understand.
No. No. He did probably not receive a notice because he's in Lincoln County.
No, no.
Okay.
No, they're not here.
But that, that would be my point.
He should have received a notice, though, right?
He's in Lincoln County, which he lives south of the property, right?
Yeah, excuse me for doing that.
You, you are, you're in Lincoln County?
Yeah, I am, too.
We only notify the residents in our county.
Fifty-seventh is the county line.
We don't have access to their database, that's the reason why, so.
Okay. I just, I'm looking at what our notification process is and it calls for five hundred feet inclusive of the right-of-way of the outer boundaries of the property. Did you happen to give the petitioner the information to get access on those southernmost properties?
No.
Okay. My question is if we've given proper notice to those people south of Fifty-seventh Street that are impacted by.
Even in the county's case, let's just take, for example, when we approve a livestock thing out in the county on the Minnehaha, Minnesota, South Dakota border, a thirty-five-hundred cow dairy, we didn't notify the people on Minnesota's side, that's Minnesota, and the same thing here, this is Lincoln County. Now, those people are here, we respect their opinions, because they've heard about it. So let's move off this issue and let's discuss this.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying, this is what.
Yes.
The states and our, that we need to get notice at five hundred feet.
Even if they're in a different county or within the city.
This is the, this is the county zoning notification.
But they interpret as if you live in the county.
Yeah, he's correct.
I'm just saying it's subject to interpretation, which is my case.
So commissioners, thoughts, concerns before we move on to section?
I, I still agree with Jesse on this issue a little bit. I think that they, that maybe we're a little bit in a gray area here of some people not being notified properly and, in my opinion, think that the petitioner should maybe consider a deferral on this item and allow a neighborhood meeting and get more information out to these people, is my thought. On the city side, any comments?
It might help ease some of the tension that I feel out here in the audience if they could have their say. And I don't think there's anything particularly wrong with it except for the fact that I'm sure they'd like to move forward with their project, but it might behoove us to take a cautious step.
Having said that, I also recognize that we have approved substations just in the last two years within the county and the city of Sioux Falls. And it is a significant change in what they're used to looking at, but the, the reality is that our electrical demands are significantly higher than they have been. We do, I know people choose to live in the country and there are substations in the country. We have substations within the city of Sioux Falls that have far less screening than I think they're proposing for this particular site. As you look at a substation, electrical substation as opposed to a solar substation that impacted significantly less from the plants that I've looked over the last several years.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would also add that the city is, has made a valid point. We have required, for example, we've, we've had neighborhood meetings with substations, we had the one out about eight years ago, Indian Hills subdivision. So, I mean, you have on occasion continued items to require the applicant to have meetings with concerned citizens, so there, we have done that in the past, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, the issue about roads was brought up and I was wondering if there was anyone from a township board that was here to address anything related to that township road? Have, have any of them been in contact with you?
I think this is Wayne Township.
Wayne Township's only that, yeah, the first part of the.
Okay, so any other thoughts? Yes, Jeff?
Well, I do think that, you know, they've said that they would work with the road system and, on that. I do kind of like the idea of having a, a meeting with more people involved. The issue of intergovernmental cooperation is always one and I know that we actually are looking at meeting with Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls to see if we can do a better job of coordinating some of our activities. We coordinate a few things, but this is a good example. At the same time, Mr. Chairman, your comment about Minnesota or, and I would also say, Moody County where they might be draining five thousand acres of land and suddenly it washes away Logan Township, how do, how do we prepare for that since there is no contact at this point with Moody County or, for that matter, Rock County, Pipestone County, whatever? But Lincoln County, I know where those guys live. And I think that there is room for additional, additional cooperation on this.
Okay, Elliot, something else? I got a question perhaps for staff or, or county commissioner here. The, the future of two-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street, essentially Fifty-seventh Street, do we know in the long-range plans for the city around widening, paving, anything of that nature, Scott?
At this point, I serve on the MPL, which is the, with the Metropolitan Planning Organization that coordinates the transportation and there's no, there's no long-range, it's not in the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan for any kind of improvements past Fifty-seventh at this point, no major improvements. I think as, as annexation occurs, that there could be some subdivision improvements, but not a major reconstruction at this point.
Commissioner, anything that you're aware of?
No, there absolutely is not and most of the new stuff seems to be up north towards the new Walmart, the new government school. But Scott, even the sixty-six foot right-of-way, they would have to have a bigger right-of-way, wouldn't they? Or is that standard for county highway, too?
That's standard at this point. When they do.
Maybe it's a state highway that's a hundred.
A hundred.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. Anything else, any actions, suggestions, motions, where you at?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd like to ask the applicant if they would consider deferring and calling a meeting with all the neighbors.
Come to the stand and respond to that, please.
Sure, I wanted to clarify one thing about notices. So we sent out a courtesy letter on August first to all the adjacent property owners, regardless if they're in Minnehaha or Lincoln. So Cherry Creek did that on her own. The CUP notification was only to Minnehaha based on direction from the staff. So, so we did have a full, on August first, everyone did receive notification, so I just wanted to, not sure if that was totally clear. We're happy to do, I mean, we have, we can, we can do a neighborhood meeting, I, I would, that's, that's fine. If that's something that, that you feel is, is a stipulation to lead this project into success, it's something that we're, that we can do.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so we sent out actually two letters, one for the CUP and one for just a general advisory?
Correct, the first one is a general advisory, look, we have a solar project, here are our pictures, we're planning on submitting a CUP to the county. And then the second one was the actual CUP based on staff recommendation to just go to Minnehaha, because we did specifically ask about Lincoln County.
All right, thank you. Have you heard that?
I guess so, I don't. I'm gonna, the thing I've got is, is, did we have a neighborhood meeting here tonight? Are they gonna resolve any more tonight at a neighborhood meeting than we did tonight? They voiced their concerns, the proposed Geronimo came back with what they would like to do and what they would do and according to a lot of the stipulations, we've got the stormwater ready, the dust and debris has already been addressed in the stipulations. Would a neighborhood meeting, referring at a, a month, and the owners hear the same thing again and they give their same proposal to them again? It might give a little more time for the owners to think about something else to do, but are they gonna accomplish any more than we've already done tonight?
I'll make a motion to the city side.
I make a motion to approve.
You have a motion?
With the stipulations as stated. I'll vote to approve.
I have a motion and a second?
Do we have a second?
Any discussion? I'll second.
Additional discussion?
I'm wondering if that, I see Ben's been on lots of times, he requires, just toward the balcony, those, if that would, if that would make it more feasible, attractive.
I personally have a preference for additional screening, especially with really close properties. Understanding the security screen.
I understand what you're referring to. I, I think what this may handle is the fact that you've got a five hundred foot setback to the south and about four hundred to the east, you know, you look at those austres or something planted right next to the road. While the certain traditional road fence, that might not be the one thing that would allow this project to overcome the visibility objections of the neighbors.
Stipulations be, those trees don't grow that overly tall. Five hundred feet away. But five hundred feet, I don't know, it's gonna cast a shadow, five hundred.
I guess the only thing I would say is shine.
I think that's probably what this issue is. Is screening adjacent to. Another thought would be to have the.
Yeah, very, very tall.
We don't want the tall fix on the pole.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think you can.
Line.
I think one is.
Definitely.
I'd like to think that there's gonna be a new policy that they will have.
Well, unfortunately, this is one of our grammar pit issues where.
That neighborhood to the east.
Yeah.
Well, and I suppose you are screened on it, you used. Wayne should have been contacted.
Spoken as a testimony.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say as it is. You know, is gonna be added traffic on that road? Who's gonna give the call? The guy at the township board, saying, you know, what's gonna be added traffic? Who's gonna maintain the road now? Is it gonna be an extra gravel? Is it gonna have to have extra dust control? You're talking about a pretty tight area. I guess I'm an official, because I sit on a township, as it is right now. I have for nine years now. Those are the calls that we receive on a daily basis. You know, we are... That's why I was wondering, during the chair that I was, for us, you look at somewhat addressed, this is the stipulation. And if you...
My question is, is it a township road or is it a county?
Township.
Township. They said they, Geronimo did say that they contacted Pat Doyle.
Okay, so, where are we at?
Motion, motion. Motion and say it.
Like winter, and then just the motion.
All right, so, we have a motion.
Okay, we're seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
I'm in the order.
Pose, yeah.
Okay, we're saying if I was saying aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes on the city side? Motion passes on the county side and the city side?
Can I just ask, just so, for our record-keeping, was, was it all unanimous or was there any not, ayes?
Unanimous, on the city side.
All right, thanks.
Scott, on the, was either two withdrawn? It's my copy, I have one for a take here.
All right.
That's the minutes from...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay, so that's our last?
That's the only item.
Okay, so we're in this portion of the county reconvene, and we'll, you guys...